To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Nice day. Motion for agenda approval. I'll make the motion.
Um, one...
Oh.
I was gonna say, I just want to add to the minutes you had a meeting on the 22nd.
Oh, okay.
So you're gonna be approving the 20th and the 22nd.
And they have copies of each, I believe.
Yep.
Yep.
So you need to amend it then?
Um, I'm assuming Dave's initial motion said the agenda has been moved. Right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, including all sets of minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, agenda approved. So minutes from the 20th and the...
22nd.
22nd.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All those, both minutes approved. General public concerns. And, general public, going around. Hearing none, we'll just move right along with our zoning administrator, Randy. And can you give us a rundown and an update as to what your capacity needs around?
Yeah. I'm not ordering my copy.
Yeah, see, he's not letting...
I'm not even, he's not even giving you any.
No, he's not, he wants me to.
You hoard everything.
Make you do it, my cup you know.
Yeah, there it is again.
I just see it quick.
Give you my moment. The, uh, thanks for having me come in today. I just, as you may recall, I've sent out emails, uh, a few times trying to keep you, uh, up to date a little bit on some requests we had from a utility company as far as putting in a switching station. And it came to be that, uh, basically we had to go through a few steps to take care of this. And, um, so this sheet that I've given you is basically, uh, the beginning of those steps. Uh, we've actually accomplished one step, being here today as a second step. Uh, I tried to prepare, uh, read very good script back on. On the 16th of July, the zoning board met by teleconference. And the reason we've done that is one of our board members came in by Zoom or anything like that. So this has worked out pretty well, so, uh, and it didn't take long. Basically, and then I also coordinated with, uh, John Beatty, our county attorney, on some, uh, some basic language and process that we've gone through. As it was determined that, basically, our ordinance did not have language in any of the articles, any of the districts that dealt with the request. And so, uh, because of that, uh, the utility company requested that we add language to our agricultural district. And as I looked at it, did more research, talked with, uh, actually the legal representative for this company, I determined that that was probably not a good idea, and that's when I consulted with Mr. Beatty. The reason that it didn't fit was because it's not a, it was not an agricultural operation. It was a commercial operation. And to put a commercial operation into an agricultural, uh, setting was not going to work. And also in the research, the other places within the county that would fall under that same category under electric utilities were already commercial. So I talked with Mr. Beatty about I wanted the language added, but in the commercial article. And so he and I went through and basically coordinated steps that we would take care of that. Now, there's two basic steps to take care of what the request was. One is first amending the ordinance to add this language. Once that is included, then we can apply it to any specific request, not just this one, but any now or in the future. And so that was another reason for not applying this or putting it in to the agricultural, uh, articles, either A1 or A2, because otherwise it could have just given carte blanche to, you know, utilities company comes in and says this is an agricultural, you know, parcel. It's, you know, a want-to-do, you know, accepted ones. It's not going to require anybody else to know about it, though, you know? And so to protect the utility company and also protect property owners adjacent to that parcel that would be used, we felt that it would be best to, uh, then go back to the zoning board after the article, after the new, uh, ordinance is amended. Now we can take it back and apply it to any specific application we're dealing with, now and also in the future. That way, it's, it's an as-needed basis for us to look at and protect basically everything. Once we have had that zoning board, uh, teleconference again or hearing, which has to be publicized again, and notification of, uh, adjacent parcel. Once that is, is accomplished and the zoning board approves that specific request, that company then will acquire that property by, by survey, that survey, and have to make the application for a separate parcel. Once that's done, then the last step is basically building permit when approved, then they could move the construction. That's kind of all this in a nutshell. But, uh, I felt, Mr. Beatty, we conferred a couple of times, we felt like we didn't want to get in a situation that we would look down the road and say, oh, wait a minute, we didn't think about that, which actually occurred in the first place because it was not something that was in the ordinance to begin with. So you didn't want that same thing to happen a second time in dealing with this. And so, basically, this is a summary of what that process. Now, uh, under teleconference information results, item C, the recommendation then is to amend the ordinance 26, Article 8, the commercial district, and Section 2. Section 2 is the principal uses permitted. Okay? And then the addition then, which was, is recommending to the board supervisors on the zoning board is to add Section 2.24, electric utilities, switching stations, and substations. So that would be an addition to those, uh, principal uses permitted under commercial. And then that way, we can now make the specific application that's taking place apply to this. So we're actually taking the amendment then, which is making the recommendation to you from the zoning board. We can now take that and actually, uh, put it into place or for this specific application. Well, we wanted it in step-by-step procedures in dealing with the legal counsel for this utility company. Then I was following over and over and over, and basically, Mr. Beatty and I said, okay, this is, these are the steps we're going to table. And so I went to him, I wanted to say, I know, this is what I want to do, and I want to know if this is what we should do legally for the county. And he said, he totally agreed. So, uh, it's my hope, like I said, not just for now, but also in the future, if something like this comes up, we can take care of it also. If something comes up again where we don't have language in there, again, it could be something else, we don't know what, we'll have a procedure in place to do this and yet if needed. So my idea was to try to make this as simple as possible, but yet cover everybody, you know, interest in this, how many individual companies or whatever. And, uh, zoning board met for about 15 minutes, went through all of the process, and unanimous that we make the recommendation then to the board supervisors, which is Article 26, that's the steps that are to be taken for amending the ordinance.
So, now that you got through all that...
Yep.
Do we need to make a motion approval, for the, upon approval, board supervisors? Just approval before the zoning board, do you carry on with the public hearing?
It would be, for this step, it would be that you would be approving the amendment.
Approve the amendment, so they can have the public hearing.
Right. Once that occurs, now I can go to the next step.
We just need approval of the amendment.
Of the amendment, sorry.
Pardon, may I, I understand. Your public hearing is for amending the ordinance, or your public hearing is for...
We have the public hearing with the zoning board.
Okay.
My teleconference, I publicized that.
But you need it, I mean, after this, after today? See, an ordinance can't be amended unless it has three hearings.
Right.
You can't approve it today.
No, but we, because I think he's asking for approval to move forward.
Okay, that's...
Yes, we aren't, no, we can't, all we can say is, he's, I don't want to put...
I haven't gotten to that part yet.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
I was kind of along the same question.
When you asked the question, I thought you can't approve the amendment.
No, but we can approve them to keep...
Or the legal counsel, they wanted this to be expediated as soon as possible. And they asked that, or lawyer asked that those, I don't know what you call it.
Re-reading?
Right, be waived. I didn't say anything about whether or not I could say that was probably happened.
You have to have at least one, yeah.
I wasn't going to go there, but that was a request that he had, that that be waived. Obviously, that, that has to be probably decided on as well.
You have to have at least one reading.
Right, right.
The board can, if they want to waive the second and third, that will be their decision to make.
Which then would put this additional item language into the commercial, which then we can apply to that specific request that they're making.
Okay. So what you're needing is a motion for approval to accept the zoning board's public hearing, uh, for special application of rezoning. Right?
Right now, it's just, it would be a motion to accept the amendment language.
That makes sense, Peggy.
We can't go to the next step until the amendment takes place, you see.
I, I don't know that you even need to do that. If you see, say the board needed to, the county attorney, I mean, the language will be approved when you have your hearing on amendment of the ordinance.
According to the ordinance, the recommendation by the zoning board comes to here.
Yes.
For approval for the amendment.
Okay.
Whether they waive the additional...
Yeah, because we could sit and say, no, we don't want that amendment, just go away.
Right, right, right. Once, so it's kind of like two big steps, but I tried to put it into five small steps. So first basic step, zoning board, hear it, public hearing, teleconference. They recommend to here to approve their recommendation. Once that has occurred, now it can be applied to any specific application. Right now, we only have the one. But I tried to put it into place, so we're not just talking about this one item, this one application. We're talking about now and also in the future.
So you don't have to go through all these steps a second time and a third time?
Exactly.
Well, so, really, or is this just what you just did, explanation, because like Peggy said, we don't really have anything to act on today. We understand what you're doing, and you just move forward.
You need to act...
We need to act on amending the ordinance.
You're in a motion to accept the additional language.
Start the process to amend the...
Do it there right from the beginning.
If I could offer some wording, wording down to kind of make it so it's not self-infusing, accept the amended language ordinance number 26, that's submitted by the zoning board?
Sounds very clear.
Excellent. I'll make that motion.
I was like...
I, I only put the other language in there because I wanted to be specific and we're not doing it for anything other than commercial.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All, there you go.
I, they are a date with the zoning board. And so I have to check again, available dates for that.
But the official amending of the ordinance has to go before these guys. So they'll have to set a public hearing for officially amending the ordinance.
I watched you there.
Okay. You make the recommendation to the board, but it has to come to the board to be officially public hearing is here with these guys on amending an ordinance. You can have a hearing with your board to discuss some other stuff, but like your board didn't approve the original ordinance, these guys...
Board supervisors.
Right.
Yeah, so these guys would have to approve the amendment at public hearing.
And that's where, so that would be a first reading.
Yep.
Do I understand what you're saying, right?
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, we need, is there a date we have to publish it, let it?
You have to give, you know, the usual notice in the newspaper and...
Right, but do we need two weeks? Do we, can we do it next week?
I was going to try to remember, yeah, because I'm too used to 10 and 20 for budgets.
Yeah.
So I think you could get by before, but you'd have to have something to favor today.
Yeah, and...
To get it on next week.
Which...
Sounds like they want it right quick.
Yeah.
And, and if this is the only language we need, if what you're putting here, if that's exactly everything, then it's all set to go, and that's just the, the...
There's been, I, I can check and see if I can get it in today, but usually it's like noon, you just have to go to...
Yeah, you pick it noon and one...
Which, which I can do that.
Full, say...
Okay.
They're just asking, decide not, not mine, it's, we want to be somebody else. When it would be, uh, the board supervisors to discuss that, I guess.
Forty days out, if they get it in Thursday, it'll be forty days from Thursday, right?
No.
No, four days, four days. So we could do it next week, we could do it next Monday. So we'd have...
Well, see, to get it in, then...
Yeah, the paper comes out on Thursday, they're already...
And if you need to know a time, Randy, just check with Chris Michelson before you leave. She can tell you what's available, so you'll know a time.
So, yeah, and, like I say, the utility company is, they want to take care of this fast. And I keep trying to say, well, yeah, for the good of everybody, we need to do this step by step.
Hmm.
And so...
Well, they look at that magic snow data up in the middle of somewhere, and they want to have it all buttoned up and done before the snow starts flying.
Yeah, I mean, I totally get it, you know, but on the other hand...
Right.
And then they, I can't say that they, you know, haven't been very cooperative, they have been, you know, so I don't want to make it sound like, you know, it's just a matter of they, they want to do it, and, and they want to do it as quickly as possible. So it's not like it's been a contentious type of thing, it hasn't been, right?
Well, if you get the, get it worked out with them, we'll have it back and...
We can start the process next Monday.
Yeah.
Do you want to see the language of the public notice before I put it in?
I was gonna say, I can send you some that I've used for prior ones, if that would help you, so you don't have to...
Well, I've had some that I've used, I've used as well, but I didn't know if anybody wanted to see the language.
I think it's pretty...
I'm guessing it's pretty much the...
I would just add the next, that next supervisor meeting, uh, would be a first hearing.
They can, they can send it out via email to us, and we can re-search it if you want.
Pretty fair, I'm standing on that.
This morning, real quick, so...
I think we have a pretty fair...
Yep.
Can I, uh, for your, uh, information, Randy, did you, I got a couple of questions, quick questions. Did you get a replacement for the vacated zoning board member?
No, I asked the zoning board members, because I didn't know how they, uh, how they came to their position, and what I understood them to say was they were appointed at large, it wasn't by any specific location. And so, uh, I thought I would ask the board here if, if anybody knows what the procedure was in the past and how we should proceed to go and find somebody...
But you need a, you need a person.
Right.
I need, I need, just kind of, is that true, at large or not, I guess, for area?
They're not like, you gotta be...
Just need, just need, just need a person willing to serve on the zoning board. How about we, a couple, a couple names, Jerry Avery, uh, Carl Mattis, former board members, and all his names.
Thank you, Larry.
Well, uh, you're on there.
I'm on there, yeah.
You're at large.
I'm at large.
You're at large, just like the rest of them then.
Yep.
Uh, well...
And at first... He's so at large, he's out of the county.
In a different state. Is it fair to just then suggest it, is it fair to just check with some potential people?
Yeah.
Like a lot of these other boards that we end up, you just know someone that might have an aptitude or willingness?
Yeah, and it doesn't take a lot.
I just didn't think it probably should come from me, that probably...
Yeah, you're a handpicked group.
What idea?
Well, to help the board, the zoning board out, and Randy out for the zoning board, how about we, it's fair to...
Everybody try to give a name and send you one.
You guys would be the official appointing, like every January?
Well, you think of a name, you...
Check with them.
You would need to.
The supervisors have to appoint.
Yeah, and so we should actually, if we think of somebody, we should ask them.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yep, yeah.
One looking for one.
Right.
How about, and you're going to be gone next week.
Right.
Maybe take this week and pick up some people and bring them up for discussion next week. Maybe we got at least a couple of people that obviously want to visit with them, see if they're willing to.
Right.
Hey, you just tell them you want to hear on it.
Yeah, wow. I think willing is, I bet Randy really likes a little participation from the board, not...
Yeah.
So that sounds good. Other than that, you got everything pretty well explained.
Well, the other, I observed the bottom, and we did discuss the zoning board teleconference that I have seen quite a few things within the ordinance that they're either clerical errors or, or maybe things that aren't in there, like this particular item that we're talking about. And so at some point in time, you know, I said, maybe we need to review, uh, that ordinance.
Clean it up a little bit, make it more detailed, a little more...
And as time goes on, things change, you know, so maybe we need to, you know, go through it. I don't know when the, when this ordinance was, was made, do you know it?
It's dated, whatever it's dated on it. I haven't looked, yeah, it should be at the left maybe.
And I don't know how often it's supposed to be reviewed or whatever, so I didn't know that. Looking down the road, and it kind of goes along by the three there, we've already talked about zoning maps. And so my feeling is that somewhere within the next six months, we do, we do both, you know, try to, try to take care of both.
Is that, you're talking on the zoning board side of things, or they, they thought that they should look at past ordinances, right?
And you can't, you can't look forward to any, everything, because you don't know, but in this case, like with the, see, I hear the amendment, you know, maybe we can go through it and say, you know, maybe this or that. And they said to me, said, could I go through it and just write down some things that I see? And I've already done that on some of the things, so, so, I think that's probably needed.
I think that's a good idea. We'll help you out with getting the full board back together, and then, I think that was a great thought on the board's part, to review some of the past ordinances, and I think it would work on that. Obviously, if you like this, if they see something, they bring it before the board supervisors. That's all.
And I don't know whether, I'm not talking about, you know, complete rewriting, I'm talking about looking at what maybe should they include in updates. There are some misspellings, uh, you know, things in there, so, uh, I, I try to look critically as I do go through different things. You know, I find it once in a while...
Keep that in front of the board and see if you can't get a full board in place. Anything else?
Well, I, I just thought I better check, we've been doing the teleconference because of the coronavirus. Teleconference, zoning board agreed that that was working for them.
Okay.
And so, and I didn't know whether or not I should ask you about that working, knowing that you're now meeting in, in person, I didn't know if you wanted us to do, to do that as well, or...
No, I'd say, do, do what you're comfortable doing. More comfortable doing it, you know, we don't want to...
The hell happens, seeing it work, then?
It probably works.
It works, it worked very well, I mean, it's just...
Yeah.
And I think it's more important to have the, the meetings even by teleconference more often than it is to, like, you're going to get together, no one shows up.
And if you get something serious, that's a little word that... If you have to.
If it's safe, it's working.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to make any requests.
I think they're going to find out off in a lot of businesses, there's going to be a lot less in-person meetings.
Yeah. No, that's fine, maybe.
And I'll, I'll be gone the week of the 10th. I have a friend out in Colorado, he hired me to come out and bring his new cabin, so...
Oh, there you go, fun vacation.
Yeah.
Well, no. Not, not called a vacation, so, I, I'd let you know that as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Randy. Does anybody else have anything for Randy? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Get that public hearing in the works?
Yes.
Ben, are you good to go?
Sure. The first item on the agenda that I have is to approve Paper Action Number 8, Merriman Bridge, for object VROs dash slot dash CO46, parent W3 dash SB dash 46. This is the remainder of his Class 10, Class 20, and payment for resubment engineering. Merriman finished their portion of it on Thursday, uh, before I came in this morning. Merriman called Dave and said that the guardrail guys and the cedars are supposed to be there today, so if they both show up today, we'll be done. We'll have the road back open this afternoon.
With all that rain we've been getting, we want that seed to grow.
Right, yeah.
I think we got 14 drops in town over the weekend.
Yeah.
Need your windshield messy?
Yeah, well, it's been a good project, just went pretty smooth.
It has gone really smooth.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, motion to pay Merriman $44,315.14.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Uh, second item that I had was just kind of a broad topic as far as county equipment. Um, I just put together a list of equipment that was in these past years, uh, budget for current year that we just started, as well as obviously future needs that we've looked at in the past. The two tandem trucks were ordered, those should be here around the first of the year. Tractor backhoe is delivered and it's being used up in both quite frequently. Uh, UTV researched it, put stuff, started putting specs together, and then obviously construction hit. Uh, the wheel loader grapple bucket... Uh, the wheel loader grapple bucket, we postponed, and we're looking at just adding that when we, uh, look at getting another loader. Um, obviously fiscal year twenty-one, uh, pickup for boat, loader, excavator, excavator trailer. We did demo the, the road groomer. Um, I think we were probably late in the year for when that road groomer showed up. I mean, it was like the third week of April, and by that time, the road was pretty firm.
There wasn't much need for it this year.
It didn't cut like I was hoping it would, but I think if they would've came in, say, beginning of March, we'd have seen what it really did. So I'm gonna talk to Darren and see if he can come back in, like, October, and we can have a better idea of, you know, when, when it's raining, we're all trying to get crop out.
Yeah, things are actually wet.
Yeah. Um, uh, future needs, obviously a semi tractor. I did go to JECO last week and took a, a site visit, walked through their plant. It's extremely impressive, everything that they can pump out from product.
It's amazing, yeah? After Ed, I've had a tour there.
It's really neat. Um, but, uh, they're supposed to be giving me some, some better numbers. That was just a quick online search for numbers for their types of trailers. Um, we looked at additional snow blower for that attached to the loader. Right now, the only snow blower that we've got in the county is nineteen seventy-eight Oshkosh. Um, knock on wood, the thing still runs well. We save a couple thousand dollars in maintenance every year to keep it running proper, batteries, tires, stuff like that. But at some point, it's gonna get hard to pump parts for it.
It's still operational.
But it is still operating.
Every day in the land, we pray you never have to use it.
Exactly. But every year, you know.
So, that type of snow blower, go on the front of our backhoe?
That goes on the front of the.
Oh, the end, the end loader, oh, the end loader, okay.
The, you see, the DOT has been using.
Okay, the DOT has one that they use alone on, on bridges around, when it gets too hot, they blow it off the ducts and bridges it in.
It's had a, its own independent engine, and hydraulic motor.
Oh, it is, just quick taches on and where you go.
Right on the front. But they're not cheap.
I see that.
Um, and then the last thing is the dura patcher, uh, this would be like a hobble patcher. Um, I know quite a few counties do have them, we do not. Uh, they've got one down in mid-country right now, I went and looked at it on Friday, it's used one. It's got three hundred and fifty hours on it roughly. We're looking to get just under thirty thousand for it. I talked to Rick Kenna last Friday, he said years ago, the county was looking at going in on one city, but for what they were paying, uh, Brian Prescott put, uh, the pavement doctor one in and fixed it. It did justify that much machine. You know, we talked about the county doing more and more of this stuff, and I was looking at this scenario where.
Would that work for these small patches that we gotta deal with too, or?
It, it worked for, like, drag strip, uh, out at Sheldon Park, I got a little bit of pop outs on some of that auto seal that would fix that. Um, when you're driving down the road and you feel that right tire dip where there's a covert, it would fill that in nice. Some of what, uh, Fort Dodge asphalt is doing for repairs, it would fix some of that. So large, so larger patches.
Yeah, like that spot south of Hardy where you fix the pipe, isn't it?
It wouldn't work there.
If I had to fill in the lift, four feet.
You're still gonna want like six inches of asphalt.
Would it do some of the things that were a great improvement this year, some of the bridge approaches?
Some of the bridge approaches.
You know, if it's not too, you know, if they don't have to go in and do a bunch of reconstruct, just smoothing off areas, will it work for that?
Yep, it would work for something like that, you know, and.
How deep, can you go with it? I mean, are.
Yeah, I mean, you can put multiple lifts on it to get your thickness. Uh, I would say probably an inch. You're using, uh, an asphalt mulch and, and then like three eighths minus chips over the top. So, a half an inch is one lift, basically. You see, the DOT does it on this stretch, the Highway Three, basically from the four-way stop to the underpass. I mean, they come in and they do that every year, fix some spots. Um, over the past ten years, we've spent about seventeen thousand with, uh, pavement doctor. That includes all of the material and everything, so it's like, does it justify that machine or not, you know, I mean.
If you can coordinate, if you can coordinate, uh, bridge approach, you know, repairs with some like you did this year, with some of the crack filling and that, and I'm guessing that was pretty cost effective as well.
Yeah.
Where it wasn't a set.
We've been waiting for Fort Dodge asphalt to come and do story leveling for two years now, I think. We kept them here for a month. I mean, I said, we have to go to another county.
But, when it's, you know, it's a big projects that they did, a lot of stuff that they did, but the things they did that you'd use this dura patcher for, you know, probably didn't come out without all that much.
Right.
That portion of it.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to build for that.
But, I'd like to say too, and obviously we don't know quite how our income level is gonna be for it in these challenging times. Um, things like, you know, that, the end loader, snow blower, so on and so forth, I mean.
Those are, I mean, those are all, those are all future wish lists.
Good to put that on there for discussion.
Put together a list of where we're sitting for equipment. You know, typically, in August is usually when I look at the pickup, or like boat. You know, we need a new foreman truck, similar to the one that we bought from the Ford City shop. Everything that I've seen so far, as far as our payments from the time twenty-one accounts, our payments are right at the level that they're supposed to be at. Uh, we're not taking the dip like we expected back to March or April. Now, we probably are seeing a dip on the low option sales tax side because of the business that closed. You know, we spent money, you're not getting, you're not building.
Not building that sales tax.
We haven't seen it yet, the checks have been something exactly the same, but I anticipate it to happen at some point.
And is that some that, you know, people are talking like there might be another shutdown in October, November, you know, so you don't wanna spend too far out.
No, gotta be careful.
I wanted to give you guys an update and.
I had a question, beans we're talking equipment. Uh, I know we have spoke to you before about putting cameras and locates in our vehicles, but you know where everybody's at at all times, so if somebody calls in and you haven't seen a maintainer, and you can say, look on your computer, well, I went by there a week ago. And if we do have an accident, we do have it recorded, um, because there has, surrounding counties have had a couple of accidents with their dump trucks lately. And, uh, I did talk with our insurance agent, he was supposed to be checking to see if you get any kind of discounts for that type of equipment. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, but.
Uh, I talked with U S Cellular last week briefly and just told them that I'd like to, uh, teleconference or video chat with them where we see their product. I've seen Horizons, I've seen, uh, Samsara, which is the company that Co-op uses. Um, they've got everything from basically a air bones G P S, which just tells you where the machine is and where it has been. And that's like sixteen or seventeen dollars a month, to the full blown that have cameras pointing forwards and backwards. And in the event of an accident, it backs up and records the previous thirty seconds or minute before the accident and after the accident. Uh, in the event of Boone County where she ran into the side of him, it wouldn't show anything other than he stopped at a stop sign and then went forward. But it wouldn't have a camera on the side. But like, uh, in Wester County's accident, uh, it would show.
But it was, it was proof that he had stopped at the stop sign.
Yes, it would've been proof that he stopped at the stop sign. Yep. Um, I would like to look at, at U S Cellular's, and I know Adam over at Wright County is using some other product. I need to talk to him and find out the information on that, but then, yeah, I'd like to bring it all to the board.
Yeah.
Look at one, but, I mean, I'm looking at thirty units.
Yeah, it does, it does add up.
By the time you, you have ten dump trucks and we've got twelve motor trawls, uh, seven pickups, and that's assuming that we don't want G P S in, loaders.
Yeah.
Backhoes, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Something.
Think about it, yeah. Okay.
Um, just to.
I just knew somebody that was involved in an accident with a county truck from Wright County, so.
Uh, was that your mom?
Yeah, it was my mom, yeah.
I, I saw the accident report and I thought, oh, it was your mom.
I thought, you know, I, you know, they didn't squabble anything about it, they just said it was our fault, and so.
He was backing up to.
Give room for a semi turner.
Semi truck turning on, okay. Yeah, I saw that. Um, just to update you guys as far as everything, like I said, Merriman finished on Thursday, guardrail and seeding is today. Uh, A B C on C eighteen was completed last Monday by Denko. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to try to buy it and look at it, looks like a nice product. Uh, Ten Point has done one lane of, down here by the museum, they're there today doing the other lane. Uh, they're gonna do a small patch on the Rutland Road today as well, and then tomorrow, they will be on the Brackade Road doing those patches. Like I said, Fort Dodge asphalt finished on Wednesday. Uh, we are edge rutting up in the boat area, they are filling the holes in the landfill today.
Oh, good. I'll drive out there and take a look.
Yeah, he said that there was lap out there.
Yeah, he had them staked out.
Where the spots were at, so they're supposed to be calling the equipment out there.
Good.
Uh, today to do that. Um, I met with Mid-American last Friday, and we are gonna drop all but two lights in Pioneer, so that hundred and twenty dollar a month bill should be on like fourteen.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Yep. Uh, he was, he was gonna talk to the elevators, see if they wanted to keep two or three of them, otherwise they'll just pull the remainers.
So the rest would be, if the, uh, anybody that was up in there wanted to.
Or they could keep them as a yard light.
As a yard light, they can do it that way too.
Yep.
Good.
Um, once, uh, the fall hits, we'll have to look at moving stuff outside of the right way, you know. It's starting to creep in, if you drop a wing, you're gonna.
You're gonna be plowing junk.
You're gonna be plowing junk.
That's why I can move it.
Yeah. Other than that, I mean, that's pretty much caught up for us.
Okay.
The road repair and, uh, preservative treatment, everything looks very good on that. Uh, they actually did include the smoothness of the road. Now, the, the surfacing is just a, you know, kind of a shield or a preservative.
Yeah, it's a preservative.
So that's an interesting, uh, you know, experiment, see how that holds up. Because as we talked, when we, we first discussed and approved doing that, if that seems to be doing the trick and preserving the road, it'd make a lot more sense to put it on a sooner light.
Yes, the sooner you get it on, the better.
But that was a good spot, because we're not a, you know, a long enough stretch, but not, you know, fifty miles. And the nice thing was the crack filling, uh, it, it really made that road a lot nicer to wrestle. And even, and hopefully with the addition of the preservative or whatever you wanna call it, hope it stays in, in good shape for quite a while. But that, we can make noticeable improvements on all these roads. And the poaches is very good, they got that, really a nice improvement on the traveling ability.
Yeah.
Anything else for Ben?
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ben. All right, uh, call about, so they won't have a chance to look at the claims we dropped down and for claims approved for.
I had for General two oh six, oh eighty-one seventy, and Trinity's thirty-three, five-five-two-seventy. I make a motion for them.
That's what I had, I'll start making my motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, claim to prove. Okay, so we need to approve hire of a full-time custodian.
The tests have been scheduled, um, they're, won't be until Wednesday of this week. So, um, I don't know if you wanna approve attending the outcome of those tests that you have asked for.
I think we should.
But this way, at least it'll get the paperwork going as far as filling out what they need to have on file with us. But be ready to start as soon as they're, I don't know what start date on either one of them, but, um, that can come later too.
Uh, question on the full time, have you had any correspondence with him being able to get together with Dave this week sometime?
I did not know I was supposed to do that, I thought you guys were.
Uh, no, I said to call in, so you haven't heard anything then?
No.
Okay. I thought to.
I visited with him to get the test set up.
Okay, no, you didn't, no, you was just, but you haven't heard anything.
No.
Okay, hopefully, because when I visited with him, explained the, you know, procedure, I said to find a time, because Dave would only be available most of this week, and he's got, because of Dave, he's got some things going a couple of afternoons this week, so it needs to be scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe, hope you, you should be getting a call.
Okay. I'll let you know when.
Now, because, then you can check with Dave's schedule, and I had asked Dave, and he hadn't heard anything, of course, it's only Monday, but we've only got to Friday.
Somebody want a word, do you want, we using their name, or you?
We need to at this time.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure if I.
Arturo Marquez.
Okay, Arturo Marquez, I would make the motion to approve, uh, his hire as full-time custodian, pending the two checks.
I'd second that. Um, before you go, well, can we fix Bruce's motion before we.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I need the rate of pay.
What was, eighteen, eighteen dollars per hour.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Six months.
With six month orientation.
With a possible wage increase at that time.
Let me, we'll adjust.
With a possibility.
Huh?
With a possibility of a wage increase at that time.
After the six months? Okay, with the possibility of the increase after the six months?
You want that in the motion?
Do you need, I, I was just, didn't know what all you needed in the motion.
No, I think I'm in back of the way, I want to meal.
Well, you don't have to, we can increase it at any time.
Oh, I didn't know how that worked, I didn't know.
No, we don't have to have that in the motion.
Okay, forget that.
Okay.
You wanna read what my motion? Okay, how, how much stuff I put in it?
Um. Name and rate.
I forgot this, this other one here. Okay, um, approve the hire of Arturo Marquez as a part, as a full-time custodian for the courthouse, pending background check and drug test at the rate of eighteen dollars per hour with a six-month orientation period.
That's what I thought I said.
Okay. I was hoping.
So we have, Bruce's motion, we have a second?
Now we're ready.
I'll plug in.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Now, we had the approval, uh, for a hire of the part-time custodian.
Hey, I will make a motion to approve Paul Larson as a part-time custodian at fifteen dollars per hour with a six-month orientation period.
I'll second.
And with also the background check, with also the back, pending background check, and. And with also the background check, with also the back, pending background check and.
I will second Sandy's motion.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Part-time custodian hired. Yeah, well, good stuff. I think I mentioned Bruce maybe where Paul was in visiting with Dave setting up for his times to get together with him this week.
Okay, good.
We got that much going and the process of pending background and check and drug test is in motion with Paul. He was there visiting with Dave, so he's moving along with that just fine.
Did he have any official start date that he wanted to start?
I think, again, I won't speak because Dave's, like I say, he's working through the end of the week, but he does have a couple hours here and there where he's not gonna be here.
No, I mean, the new.
I know, but so pending, Dave and Paul wanting Dave to be here, if, I think if everything gets approved, you know, and the background and the drug test and that comes back and he can be official, he would maybe like to begin this week sometime. He didn't say an exact date.
So we can't put anything in our motion then?
No.
We can't take him until you guys have officially approved the start date.
Well, if we knew when.
We'll have a next week's agenda.
And we can do it retroactive.
Right. So if he does happen to start on Thursday this week, we can do it retroactive.
That's kind of what it's looking like because.
Let's put it back on next week's agenda.
Okay, because he would, the more time and this has been.
They get us.
But he spends with Dave and Bill, the part-time, Bill is only, I think he's only working through Wednesday.
Yeah.
And David mentioned to Paul that Bill does do things, some different things and some things differently. And that exposure for Paul to at least get a chance to visit with Bill. So they're, now, they're really doing the best they can to get all three of them coordinated during the week.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
If we can do what Rick mentioned on retroactive, he may be in a little bit like that for the week.
Okay.
All right, we have the acceptance place on file of the sheriff's quarterly report for the quarter end of June thirty, twenty twenty. Project Rose.
I find the sheet I gave you, the quarterly reports on one side and the annual reports on the other.
Question. I'd make a motion to accept this quarterly report.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to approve the annual report. Motion carried. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Both pass. Now we have the approval of pay increase for Shirley Bumgaran, the jailer, to seventeen dollars and twelve cents an hour effective July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
I'll make the motion to accept Shirley Bumgaran wage of seventeen, twelve, effective July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Through. Through pay increase for Erica Dunleavy, jailer, to seventeen dollars and twelve cents effective August first, twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All. Both? Motion carried. All right, committee votes.
I did not have any official committees. I didn't meet with, um, no, I did not. I thought it was, I thought it was the week before. No, it was this week. I met with Rick Hopper. That's what it was. Did I tell you that last week?
Oh, I don't think so.
All right.
On which, uh.
DD ten. He, I think it was this week.
Okay.
He was down and we went out and looked at the outlet of DD ten where they cleaned up some stuff and.
Yep.
And there already, since he cleaned it, there's always been another limb that's fallen in and started damming it back up. He suggested maybe we look at purchasing some right-of-way so they can go in and clean it whenever they like or the duty, and he was gonna look into that.
Yeah, that was.
I mean, there's another limb about this big. It's fallen into the thing and already stuff is starting to build up on the trees and so.
As much of that as can be cleaned up and out of there, the better.
Yeah. So he was gonna check into it and get back to us at the next time he was down, we'll get some info on it, so.
That was good.
That's about it.
That's it?
Yep.
Um, Monday, the twentieth, I was up here for the interviews for the, that was the full-time custodian. Thursday night, the twenty-third, I participated in the CFR eighty-five zone. That was all I had for the week.
You were here Wednesday?
No. Wednesday night I stepped aside. Sandy did it.
We had our, actually, full meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Oh, you were here.
That was Thursday.
Okay, Wednesday night I was here then.
Looked like you were here anyway.
Okay. I was here then Wednesday night, Thursday night I, Sandy and Eric did the.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
Monday, the twentieth, um, all six counties, um, with CSS met in Garner, Iowa. Webster County did provide a preliminary, well, can you say it, preliminary budget for what they thought, but it was just core, um, services and CSS provides way more services than that. And if we took the budget at what it was, um, Webster was saying there was a hundred and five population, a hundred and five thousand population. So if you divided that, um, it was four point one eight four million dollar budget, it would be a thirty-nine point ninety-something per capita, which is ten more than what we're paying right now with much better services. So to me, right, Humboldt and Pocahontas are not looking that this is really beneficial to our, you know, to our constituents to have this type, but I mean, it's not, it's not still a poss, I mean, it could still be a possibility depending upon, what, DHS? States that we have to, they say that it's still up to the counties, but they, they shall, um, conduct the investigation of it and they shall help us make that decision. They stressed that in our meeting on Wednesday, they'll be up there, so.
What does that mean? They shall help you make that decision?
That's just it. They, they're giving you in hand what shall and may, and I was like, you know, it's that, the word, you know, depending upon what definition you want to use for that word, and that's the problem right there. One minute they're saying that we're gonna be able to make this decision, but then the next minute when we were talking, as a, so, I'll just go ahead and say the twenty-second, we met in Mason City for CSS also. At that meeting, we had DHS on, on the call and, um, they were kind of laying out what the work is. Right now, we've got to provide the data for the six counties. They're not stating what west, because you know how they said that it'll be divided between the west and the east? So I asked the question, well, what is the west? And DHS made the comment that, well, it's anything west of Allen McKee and Clayton, because Allen McKee and Clayton are the, are the seeds. So if any, any county that want, if they want to leave that region, CSS informs us new and they can't. None of the other counties are really looking at, at doing that, but, and then again, like I said, then they, so that first starts the data. So we've got a, um, a car, who's a CFO, she'll get all that data and all that information to DHS as far as what services, how many, where it's going from each county and things like that. Then DHS is going to meet again with us as a whole, um, group, region, and then they're also going to meet individually with, and she wouldn't come right out and say whether it's gonna be with the whole six counties or if it's individual each county of that six. They didn't really, it's like they're keeping their options open on what they want to do and they're, you know. So that's kind of where we're at right now, but still limbo. Each month DHS kind of has a thing of what we're gonna do and she's hoping that we're gonna be able to make a decision by November. And then February would be when, so DHS has also said too, which is a little unsettling, that our twenty-eight E agreement, they can trump our twenty-eight E agreement. They can come in and say, no, this is how it's gonna be. They don't have to abide by what our twenty-eight E agreement is, because our twenty-eight E agreement says that we can leave if we want to, but we have to have the thing in by November. So if we don't get our stuff in and we don't get everything worked out the way we want to, this has to be done by February twenty-twenty-one, otherwise this bill falls off. And so DHS has said, no, we don't get it done by then, we have till February. They overruled the twenty-eight E. Yeah. So, yeah, so much for wanting us to have local decisions. Um, okay, so, enough that. On Tuesday, the twenty-first, I had a Zoom meeting with, for the, um, Sea Cat daycare. Um, Thursday, um, I did have another CSS meeting in Pocahontas and that was just kind of to figure out a little bit of a game plan or what we wanna, it wasn't too much kind of, how we want to publicize this or whatever. And then on Friday, I did meet in Fort Dodge with Nikki Conrad, which is the other, um, board member of the Webster County Board. She just had some questions. She wanted to get some clarification, so I met with her.
How are things going over to daycare? Are they, numbers-wise, are they?
Numbers-wise, we're still in the red, but it is getting better. We would like to get occupancy up, of course, with kids. But for staff, for the staffing that we have right now, um, we have a, a good ratio of kids to staff. So if we do get more kids, then of course we're gonna have to get more staffing. Summer activities are going well. They go to the pool, um, you know. It's hard to do some of the things because they, you know, with the COVID and what the, um, DHS has said what the parameters are, what, you know, how many kids and, and things like that. Can you keep all the kids, you know, in one room? They're not in, they're not in, I mean, both those one, you know, same thing with the staff, the staff stays with that one room. So there's, they're doing a lot of good things. They've been praised by DHS for their, for their work. And they're, um, they've got a good summer program going as far as, you know, working with the kids still, you know, on activities and learning, learning things.
I didn't know if their numbers had dropped off with.
They, they've been saying very regularly, you know, you lose, we lost a few, but then we also picked up a few, you know, with the, with the COVID thing. Yeah, it's been good. That is all I have.
Um, supposed to have a Zoom meeting with Myers on Wednesday and I was on the road, so I missed that one. I was up here at supervisor's meeting at five-thirty on Wednesday. That's all I had this week. On Monday, the twentieth, Bruce and I conducted interviews with the full-time custodian candidates. On Wednesday, the twenty-second, we had the full supervisor's meeting here, five-thirty, for the janitorial hire. On Thursday, the twenty-third, five-thirty, Sandy and I were here for the part-time custodian interview.
And I forgot to mention that, Dave, but I'm sure you.
Sandy was here too.
I was gonna say, I forgot to mention.
Verify that.
And Wednesday.
A lot of interviewing, a lot of that, so that was what I had left.
I'd like to mention Paul Anderson forwarded an email and I know he sent it to Peggy, um, in question of the lost funds or, um. He was at, I was at a church meeting and we discussing the, the, uh, food pantry and what the churches are considering doing, and his recommendation was wondering why we couldn't use some of that, money from the lost fund, that, uh, why that couldn't be allocated towards the food pantry, because it's, uh, money that could be used for food pantry, be to buy food or rent a building. I think it would benefit the whole county. I believe in the past, the money has been used for courthouse security, IA camera, and locks, et cetera. I know that that tax is up as well. It's for more and better use. So I'm just bringing it up. I heard Dave say that he received it, so.
I did too.
I did too.
I guess I'm throwing that out there so that they don't think we don't read.
I'll read it. Send it. Question would be, can you use that money for said projects like the food pantry?
You could because it's, the way the wording is, thirty, you're thirty percent, um, whatever you determine it to go to. We can't change the ballot language and specifically say X amount of money will go to them for the next ten years because.
No.
It's already been set.
Right. We have the discussion to follow the money towards something like that.
You always have, yes.
You would have to cut back on the ones we're already funding.
For the twenty now.
Which is the libraries, comes out of there, correct?
Yeah. And.
And other things.
You've done some of the LEC funding out of there for the.
It's kind of been a set, money to set, you know, entities and projects and things.
But that's always open for your discussion. I usually bring it up at budget time.
We could explore that, budget time. But it's, I mean, my biggest, my biggest question when I read that was if you could be used for that. It can be, but Rick's point is, it's already allocated, has been allocated some other.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it'd have to be.
You definitely have it.
Someone else's piece of the pie gets smaller.
Yep. But it bears discussion when we come up with that. I have, try to keep as much things out of my drawer as possible, but this goes back to, we talked about this a couple times, and it's basically the security for the computer software. Solutions sent this multi-page thing back in early part of June. I just keep looking at this, wondering, do we need to take some action? Do we need to come up with a certain protocol? Do we need an extra?
We have done what we can at this point. The person that we need to talk to is out on medical leave. And when he comes back, we'd be happy to visit with him.
From what you've understood from Solutions thus far, is this possibly, say, increased security with the systems, something they could provide?
Oh, definitely, yeah. It's just how far do you want it to be?
Right. There's something that we could get an extra security service through Solutions, and the person that you need to get that information from isn't available.
Right.
So that is, when that becomes available, I just.
It's been, what, maybe two weeks ago or so when we, maybe three weeks? When we visited about it and I called him up to message and got a message back that he is on medical leave and when he comes back.
Okay. Because hopefully, you know, if you read through this, and I read through not word by word, but the highlights, something we can discuss, taking, have the information coming from Solutions, it looks like they can provide the needed security. And it's obviously a company that I'm very familiar with, does a lot of the computers things already.
Yeah.
Would that be a reasonable process?
You bet, and they have already provided some additional. You bet, and they have already provided some additional services to some counties. Not every county wants to tighten it down, you know, to where it's just extremely uncomfortable for everybody. So, it's just a matter of where you want to be on the problem.
We'll look forward to some further, when they become available, to which, I guess, the level of security we don't do is, potentially. Okay, um, other things, I'm sure no one has heard anything from the district, Tumble, Webster, three, nine, that's involving the railroad and the crossing underneath.
Haven't heard of it.
I've not either. I made a note to check with, uh, engineer, the Corps of Engineering and see a paper or anything, but...
It's, what, two weeks?
Oh.
They were there...
They have a response by the thirteenth of July.
Right.
And we determined, we didn't get a response. Obviously, I don't think Webster County got a response, and I'm not so sure the engineering company got a response. So, I thought it might just be good here the next day or two to check and see. So, things that, you know, kind of a back burner stuff, but be interesting to see if they could...
If you don't keep pushing them, they...
Well, if you don't ask, I mean, and I know, we all know the railroad situation, and, I mean, that's a, still a drainage issue in that district that would like to get some resolution, so we'll just, know that you'll keep us up, up to speed on that.
Yeah, so the daycare that needs to be...
One other thing, this is something, we have an LEC meeting a week from today. Everyone's aware that we're, uh, searching for, uh, different funding for the radio project. Bruce has done some checking, Rick has. Uh, well, our hope is, we have some information at LEC meeting next week to discuss.
I've heard back from a few of them, but not all of them.
Yep.
Still waiting to hear back, um, what their proposal is for this.
Where are we now? Bruce, did you get anything?
I visited with two, and the third one was, uh, one of those, uh, when you talk to them, it's reported, please contact via email, and I...
That's fine, but I'm hoping that we have something for discussion.
Well, they said they would put higher-ups in, from there, so I guess all we can do is wait until they...
Peggy has so graciously, also the secretary for the LEC, and if they just email Peggy with any information that she can add, that, that will be on our agenda for next.
Yes, well...
I've talked with Corn Belt and got their information, and I've talked with David Boss for Bank Iowa, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Yeah, that's the one I'm waiting on.
Okay.
And as you just mentioned...
He was on vacation this last week, so...
Understandable.
No, keep checking, and, and we're not under the gun as of, you know, this month, but we are under the gun by the first of November.
Yeah, got to keep working.
Yeah. So, that, that's all, because everybody else, we've had a, had that a general discussion. That's what we're working towards on the LEC. Hopefully, we have some information to discuss at the LEC meeting. Well, that's all I can think of for future things. Anybody else? Peggy?
Um, we talked about a date, and I just, there's only, I haven't heard back from Dave as to what works. Uh, meeting with Renee, I'm working to get some union step out of the way, contract is up, so we got to get the initial, um, part of it together. She mentioned the tenth to seventeenth of the twenty-fourth of August. It's looking like the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth would work for most of you. Bruce said he'd try to fit whatever he could into the schedule. Dave, I don't know what works for you, would either the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth work?
That would.
Okay, so then I'll just let Renee know she can pick either the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth, and we'll go with that.
Could we do that immediately after our regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
And hope that the regularly scheduled meeting is even shorter than this one, if luck would have it.
It could be, yeah.
You know, and then have, because that's not an immediate, uh, in-meeting discussion, that's just information. So, that, is that why everyone, I, I felt...
Yeah, I figured, I was assuming that.
Short meeting and then visit with Renee right after. I mean, any of those, yeah, any of those dates work for me.
Okay.
I just, I guess, I have that.
I'll look at the agenda too and make sure that we don't have any rage or anything major going on either, what?
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, we are adjourned.